It would call the meeting order. We would entertain motions for selection of board chairman for 2020.
I make the motion, the nomination of Mr. Kenneth Fuller.
I'll second.
All in favor? In that case, it's not her. Our next item on the agenda is selection of a board vice chair for 2020. I would open the floor for nominations. Yep, we approve anybody that's not here.
I guess that nomination for Mr. Eddie Hazel.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? In that case, all in favor of Eddie? In the case by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? You're abstaining? Would you abstain?
Mr. Fuller, the next item on our agenda was to recess into our finance corporation meeting. Ross Sinclair and associates cannot make our meeting tonight, so they've asked that we table that and reschedule that. Joe Nancis has retired effective December 31st, and Dr. Bob Harbin will be the one that will be conducting that finance corporation meeting for us.
Okay. I don't think it would be inappropriate to maybe say what we were going to discuss.
Yes. The good thing about that is our bond sales that we have to do in order to do building projects, Ross Sinclair and myself have been discussing about reselling those bonds. And what we will be doing in the finance corporation is reselling those bonds, and it will save the district over $100,000 in the course of the bond. Around $10,000 to $12,000 annually that we will have to pay towards it. So that's, that's a really good thing for our district, and he's got the bond schedule payments and everything that he'll bring to the meeting as well. So we're thankful to have Ross Sinclair and Parkman doing a bit of what they do.
Thank you. Next item will be seven, a motion to approve prior minutes. We have two special minutes, one for January 9th and one for January 18th.
December 9th and December 19th.
And 9th and December 18th. So we can do them, probably we ought to do them separately. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes for December 9th.
I'll make a motion for approval of the minutes for December 9th.
Is you second, Joe?
Yeah. Well, the minutes, the minutes says again.
The first, December 9th. Okay? All in favor? I oppose. I will abstain because I wasn't here. Motion to approve the minutes for December 18th, which is a special call meeting.
Does it have to be a legal meeting? Just throwing that out there.
What?
I said, does it not have to be a legal meeting in order for it to be legit?
It wasn't a legal meeting.
Okay? When did you all put the notice out that it was a special meeting? The earliest I saw was 9:00 a.m. And by law, you're supposed to give 24-hour notice.
Was that on a Thursday? It was done Thursday morning about 10:30. And I emailed Pansyl Harold.
Thanks Wednesday morning, Robyn.
Wednesday morning?
Yeah.
Yes, Wednesday, I'm sorry.
Well, good, at least you all did that.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm to adopt to entertain a motion to approve the minutes for special call meeting. Hope you can do that.
Make a motion?
I second.
All in the discussion, all in favor, indicate the same aye. Aye, I oppose. Communications to the board. Minutes over.
My first?
You're first. I'll talk to the back.
I'll take second one, thank you. All right, I want to commend our teachers and our students who ended our first semester. It was very successful, and they've had a really good start to the second semester. Grades were sent home last Thursday. There were a couple snags in the grading system, so a couple grades might not have been posted, but all grades have now been posted if they check on campus. This week, our seventh and eighth graders are finishing up math testing. As soon as that is completed, we're going to desegregate all the data, be able to look at growth and trends, and see where our students are at from fall to winter. At the high school, we like to do it after the Christmas break, because before Christmas break, our students do their semester exams, and we didn't want to overdo it for our seventh and eighth graders, so they had that little bit of a break. And then we will be, they should be wrapping up either tomorrow or Wednesday, depending on which test they were on.
Seventh, seventh grade needed a few more days to complete.
I was going to say, one of them, I couldn't remember if it was the seventh or eighth. Last December, we did what was called Dollar Wars at our school, which was the students raising money by putting in a dollar in a drawer, you could sabotage the other grades. They had a lot of fun. We were able to raise $953 that the high school donated to the youth service center. And Ms. Bruner used that money to help buy eight angels off the youth service tree. So we actually completed her list for her. Last year, we only raised about $200. So we were very proud of our students and the fact that they were able to raise money for eight fellow students, because we know her angel tree services Pansyl and the Pansyl students. I also want to thank Ms. Sexton. And Ms. Webb will mention what she did for the elementary, but for the high school, we had a band enquirer concert at the SIP. It was a great event. Everyone enjoyed it from all accounts in our band enquirer program. She has to be commended for what she has done the last three years. I want to congratulate our boys. If you were not at the game Friday night, they moved to 3-0. It was a great game. It reminds me of the old time games, packed gym, standing room only, lots of people yelling. But I also want to commend the wonderful atmosphere. I know a lot of people were nervous considering the actions that happened last year. It was a wonderful atmosphere. Both sides should be commended. I want to thank Mr. Tom Parker and Noel Crum and all the administration at Johnson Central for their help with their end, as well as our administration for their crowd control. It was a great game, very proud of our boys. And tonight, after the meeting, our girls will be playing again, Johnson Central, at 6:30. So everybody needs to make sure they have a great crowd. We're looking forward to another great game tonight, just like Friday night.
What place?
Huh?
Where is it?
Right there, right there at home again. So we had two home games. The boys will be in action tomorrow night. They have their opening round, they are in the playing game of the All-A Classic. That will take place at 6 o'clock at the East Kentucky Expo Center in Potville. They will be playing East Ridge. So we have a lot of good activities this month, especially basketball. I'm a basketball girl, so looking forward to a great season. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Webb.
Ms. Webb?
Yes, I also want to give a big shout out to Mrs. Sexton. She did a phenomenal job orchestrating our elementary Christmas program. And shout out to the high school, Ms. Austin and her staff, for letting us come down there to have it. The crowd that turns out for that is phenomenal. It gets bigger every year. We filled up the high school gym with our elementary crowd.
I have to say, I think it rivaled the Central game of Friday night. That's how big it was.
It was a big turnout. Ms. Sexton and our other specials teachers that helped her with that, they put on a great show every year. We also wrapped up the first semester. We're back starting the second semester. We did our math testing before the Christmas break, so we've already started looking at the data and where we've grown and where we still need to make some growth. Also wanted to throw out, we had 14 new students at the elementary as of the beginning of the semester. We did lose five, they moved out of the area, so that's a net gain of nine. As we get into allocation time, just throwing that out there. Looking forward to a great second semester. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Ms. Ra...
Yes, sir. I've got just a few things. As far as testing is concerned, we've got a couple mock ACTs coming up. We have, on February the 4th, we have the third final mock ACT. Those juniors have performed very well so far up to this point, so we're looking forward to the actual test in March, March 10th, when they take the statewide assessment. We look forward to that. Also, something we're doing a little bit different this year is on February the 11th, we're taking our ninth and 10th graders, and we're taking them to Mayo to do a mock ACT assessment. So we can kind of set some benchmark there and follow those kids, track trends, and track their growth throughout high school. So I think that's a, that's a good idea that we're implementing this well. Also, starting in February, we have some field tests coming up. All those field tests will be online, and that will be grades 3 through 11. So that's, that's coming up as well. Also, the Impact Kentucky Working Condition Survey, it used to be called the TEL survey. That is, actually, that opened up today. That opened up today, and essentially what that is, is it's an anonymous web-based survey for our educators to voice perceptions of teaching and learning processes within the school. So we have that going on as well. And the last thing that I have is you'll see there on, under the action items, on letter F, the motion to approve the CDE. Essentially what that is, that's a, that's a living, working, breathing document that we put forth in front of you all every year, and it's made up of some diagnostics.
C what?
C.
It's a, it's, it's, it's an acronym.
Like Dick Stafford.
Yeah, well, it's kind of, and then you put a C in front of it, you got it. You got CD, you can CD. But essentially what that is, is that's the diagnostics that we do, some assurances as far as the district is concerned, some superintendent gap assurances, a needs assessment. We look at both schools in the district, and we determine what needs based on, based on various sources of data, you know, what we need to do in the schools. It also has a district safety report, and the big part is a continuous improvement plan. And essentially what that is, is it's, they set, the state sets forth about six goals that we have to put forward. Those goals, we have to come up with ways that we're going to achieve those goals, and how we're going to do so. And the last part is the executive summary, and that executive summary just really gives you a snapshot of what the district looks like as a whole. So just in case you guys had any questions when that, when that action item came up, I just want to go ahead and throw that information out, too.
A lot of it's hard work.
It is, it's about a 70-page document, and, you know, it spanned out over about a three-month period that I, that we completed, so. But I think you guys have, my little Lily had, she broke her arm last week, and I was in the process of getting this to Robin to get online, but I think you all have it now in your e-meeting, so you have a copy of it.
Our ACT, how's our trend been for the last three or four years?
Uh, right now, right now, it's, it's good. Right now, it's gone up.
It's gone up the last three years.
Yeah.
What is it now?
Uh, it's been a, we've been right around, you're like a 20.4, 20.5, 20.7, right there in that area. Usually, at this time of the year, with our mock ACTs, we're in the 19 range.
This is good stuff.
Right now, we're at 20 point, we're an entire point ahead.
20.8.
Yeah, I was going to say 20.8.
You ever, you ever be a medium instead of a mean?
Joe, I'm an English teacher.
Medium would be...
Yeah, that's the middle number, right? That's the one in the middle. They taught me that once upon a time, but I can find you the mean.
It'll beat you, David.
That's the average. And Excel does that for me, so.
That's funny, I was going to talk about that here just a second.
So, but it, but right now, that mock ACT score, that junior, our junior class, they are trending a little bit higher at this point in time of the year than we have the past couple of years.
And that makes sense, because it's the third year of the processes that we've been playing.
Am I allowed to ask you a question?
That's up to the chair.
I wanted to just ask him. Did you say the freshman sophomore, ninth and 10th, February?
Yes, the ninth, yes, ninth and 10th grade. Scott, that'd be February 11th.
Are you talking about the law?
February 11th.
It's the BACT.
Yeah, yeah. We're just going to take a practice.
Y'all definitely drop children for a little.
Do that.
Scott.
But yeah, that's February the 11th. And then we'll take it down at Mayo, just like we would with the juniors.
We're trying to get used to it. Oh, yeah, I wonder, is it, is it voluntary, or you just take...
No, we're going to take every ninth grade and every 10th grade.
Oh, excuse me.
They'll take, sorry.
Anything else?
That's all.
Yes, yes, yes.
It's Smith. Well, there he is.
Yeah, there we are.
Other from the draft budget that we're going to boil past tonight, I've got a few things that Joe pointed out on our invoices. What was it, Joe?
Kizbit.
Kizbit.
Kizbit, and that was...
That is our unemployment, quarterly unemployment.
Is it the same company that ripped us off?
Here's one, here's one of these. He, he has taken over that, and they still use Kizbit's office.
Okay, oh, yeah, okay.
I don't know if they did or not.
And then I also did a flow chart for Joe, we talked about how the bonds, how we have these different funds. In Munis, we have a, of course, our general fund, our capital outlay, 310, and our building project fund, 320. And I do have that if anybody else wants to see, this is going to help the flow of our...
Well, actually, we have that outside of May, again, once.
Yeah, and I was going to go over, too, if you all noticed on the, on the paid warrant, you may see stuff like, I think Joe was asking about a couple of teachers' accounts. We do have, last year, we started Fund 21. That's our district activity funds for both schools. And we also have our judiciary funds, Fund 25, that's pretty much zeroed out. We have to, in our AFR this year, we have to report activity funds expenditures.
Why?
Our, this year, in our activity account, we have to start showing, but this year's AFR expenditures for elementary and high school. So that'll be zeroed out, you won't see anything, but when you see the other, some of those accounts, you, invoices you saw, the teachers do, we sweep money up, these teachers, once a month, if they have money that was raised individually, they can be parent or...
So they're really paying with their own money, but it's coming out...
It comes out of board, yes, it comes out of board. They put, we sweep money up each month, that's allowable in red book, we sweep it up to our board and the funds, and that allows them to buy stuff that can be operational.
Who comes up with all these rules?
Usually, the rules are come up with someone breaks the law.
They all do it.
Right. So that's where, if you see some of those teachers' accounts names, that's coming out of their funds, out of their individual accounts.
You take it out?
That's it, if you all have any...
Mr. Chairman, could I, I just want to stand corrected on the special call meeting. It was posted on Wednesday, the 18th, at 3:00.
Thank you, Robyn. My information was incorrect.
Yeah, sorry. I just, I get my dates confused, I had to look.
When did we have it?
We had it on Thursday.
About 4:30. That's over 24 hours.
Yeah, it's over 24 hours.
I guess, Mr. Belcher was correct then.
Are we sure about that? I was an English major. I still have nightmares about Daniel.
Mr. Chairman, board members, I want to start off with, first off, congratulating Ms. Webb and Ms. Austin on the last month of Christmas, getting through Christmas break and the work you're doing in your building. Phenomenal stuff happening there every day. I also want to take a moment to congratulate each of you for the service that you do to our community. This is Board Appreciation Month. And just some notable accomplishments that I can talk about that you all have spearheaded since I've been here, that are pretty phenomenal. My first year here, we made an investment in going one-to-one in our district, and we bought 200 Chromebooks at that point. That got us close. We weren't completely one-to-one. We were kind of ahead of the curve on that, because as we know now, all testing will be done on a device. So you also continued that commitment, and every year, we have reinvested in those Chromebooks. We buy one classroom set every year, and I think this year, we actually had enough money to buy a few more. Is that correct, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, we bought a few more. We were hoping by this time...
Hoping by this time next year, we will at least be down to fourth grade completely and working towards that. I also want to take a moment to let you know that we were able, every teacher in the district got a Christmas present this past year. I think everybody got a new Mac computer that they got, so we're very thankful to be able to do that. Not only that, they will also be, will be a part of the Data Scene Project, which does cancer research. So we're very thankful for the opportunity to be a part of that. We also will be expanding that program going forward. We are, our, your fundings, your general fund account has grown over 10% in the last two and a half years. So that being said, we've also reduced taxes. So you all have done a wonderful job of being good stewards of your money. In the meantime, we've had a blue ribbon school. Ms. Webb was able to accomplish that last year. And the growth that we've made at the high school in our test scores, both my first year and second year, has been double-digit. I think Mr. McClure's, last year, we had some growth in the 20-point range. We had similar growth last year towards the end of that year. So we're doing some really good things. We're giving more opportunities for our kids. Last year, we were able to have 29 students get their CNA program. Just got an email, Ms. Austin, this week, that they're getting ready to schedule the other awards banquet for the CNA license.
CNA and the three girls that are for lobotomy.
For lobotomy. We, we added lobotomy this year, which this kid is able to go to work right out of high school. Funny conversation, I don't think Mr. Miller would mind me saying this, his son, who's in college now, I think a junior, just had to take his CNA exam to be in nursing school. If, if he'd have been here this year, he could have got it without having to pay for it. We thank her for it.
And those things also affect their, help our accountability, because if a child earns an industry certificate, they are deemed career-ready.
Yes.
So that, that helps our, our career-ready score.
That's one of the big jumps that we made this year in our assessment, was the career readiness. Obviously, we brought drones to the school system this year. One of the things that I'm really excited about is some of our industrial tech classes. We have five students at the high school this year that are signed up in electricity.
They started electricity today.
Started electricity today. You know, those kids are going to be able to get industry certification at some point in electric, in electrical work. We've also finished a pretty big-sized building project with the, with the gymnasium, which is, I think, one of the better things that we've done in a while. If you've not been in the new gym, I think everybody has now, if they weren't there with their Friday night. It looks awesome. We've also, every student at the high school now, we, and how close are we at the elementary on the ID badges?
I think we lack another couple grades.
Okay. We, we don't take safety light in here. One of the things that we have implemented is a key to entry program at the high school. Every student at the high school now has a identification badge.
We're passing the rest, we've got two grades left that we'll do tomorrow.
And we're working on the elementary school, and the funny thing is, we started in kindergarten. Kindergarten kids are able to go through the lunch line now with their ID badge, and they can scan their cards, and it...
Mr. Smith, you can talk about that. I mean, it's... Well, we, we, I guess when we started, the play that we had, you know, at the elementary is, you know, the digits, some of those kids forget their numbers or punch in the wrong number. Now they can go through and just put their, their ID underneath their, their badge, it's going to pull up. We're going to put their pictures on the screen, too, as well as, I think we're going to work with Follett, and we're going to match their ID up, so when they check out a book, they can, the high school kids or elementary students wear it, and just scan their badge, and they check books out, as well as getting in the doors and everything else.
So we'll be able to identify every child in, in our school system. We're also replacing, at this time, we're replacing some of our security cameras. We do have some older technology that has, some of it has failed, so we're in the process of replacing that. Also, last year, we saw about a 20% increase in enrollment with schools starting. I've not told Ms. Webb and Ms. Austin this, I've started working on projections for next year. If things hold true, we will start next year with the highest number of students enrolled in our district in, I think, the last decade. Well over 800 students to start the year with.
Captain Jock Core?
That's Captain Jock Core. Our attendance percentage impacts that, and I want to commend our, both principals and Ms. Ward on what our attendance percentage is right now. We're four, two points ahead of where we were at this time last year. And our growth factor in October, which basically illustrates whether your district is growing or not. In my, in my 22 years, it's the first time I've ever been a district that had a growing growth factor. So we were up 10% this year on the growth factor. So by all indications, you all have done a phenomenal job at being stewards of this district. We're thankful for your leadership. It's a thankless job, but know that every day, you are making good, solid decisions. And our leadership is making good, solid decisions, and that's reflective of your leadership. So I just want to commend you for your work, and we truly appreciate what you've done for our school system. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And by the way, our ACT scores has gone up the last two years. And you stole my thunder on that one.
One other thing, just thought I was going to add, huh? I think we kind of talked about this last Thursday or Friday, talking about technology and stuff. And one of the things that, as a district, was been hard, at one time, we used to be able to use technology funds to purchase teachers' computers and stuff like that, is we started going into buying Chromebooks, it's kind of spread thin as far as keeping the infrastructure up. You guys were, I think, sometime around 2003, 2004, kind of frame, I guess you all passed, it cost about $75,000 to buy all new switches and to keep the network going. And it was probably 2010, 11, when we got our first Wi-Fi in the high school, and then we turned around and got about $80,000 to get the whole district re-used, E-Rate funds. I just found out Thursday, we're going to be able to use E-Rate money again this year. It's called the bridge connection, or the bridge E-Rate funds. You either use it, or you're going to lose it.
How much is it?
We're going to get, the projection amount is $34,000.
But we got to spend $34,000?
We spend seven.
Seven, okay.
It was a pretty good trade. Yeah, so we have, I think we counted that we need somewhere ballpark about 16 switches. They're all, we had two already fail this year, and which caused our cafeteria phones to go down, we rerouted to another switch. So this is pretty much, this money this year will put us back getting fairly new switches and get us back up to date in our, in both our schools. That also, with that being said, next year, E-Rate will restart all over, and then you can use that money that year, and then it's every five years, you can reuse it. You remember, back many years ago, we never had this, we had E-Rate funds, so.
Do we need that as a motion, Mr. Chairman?
No, this, no.
I would like to comment, too, is sometimes this goes unnoticed, but the motion and everything that we're doing, not the motion, but the direction we're going is, and what we're supposed to be providing is 21st century education. And kind of in the shadows, we've been really progressing with our technology. We've been funding it, and sometimes people don't realize how much money we've got to put into.
Keep it up, that's true.
So, I thank you. Next item on the agenda will probably be personnel. I want to make a comment.
I'll go ahead, sir, I'm sorry.
Sometimes we do community and school-related. We are under the, under, we're looking at that process to make sure that it's fair and equitable, everyone, and so we will be adjusting that. Yes, I...
Personnel, of course, you don't have any in this one.
Okay. Action item number one is general fund account totaling, sorry, Robin, catching it up. We had a hunk of, of bank.
Yeah, they're bond. Bank, I think.
Bank activity, I believe.
Yeah. So I entertain a motion then that we approve our general fund accounting total of $163,806.65.
I'll make a motion to approve $163,806.65.
That's item eight on the...
I put right the check to Kizbit.
It was only a couple hundred.
I know, but I, this is my...
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate the same aye.
Aye.
So, Joe, we got something.
I didn't know you could hear that well.
I can't even pick mine. I have selective hearing. Item B is a motion to approve the 2020 board meeting calendar dates. As presented, we're still meeting the second...
Second mandate.
Nine years each month.
I've got a copy here, and we post these on our bulletin board out there as well, so...
We are going to look at meeting, not just in this one, but...
We need to rotate.
Probably during the school year, back and forth like we did before.
I think it was the December board meeting that we talked about possibly having a working session with both side bases, and I think that would be a good thing to do, especially in allocation time. So, we'll be rotating those back and forth between the two, the elementary and the high school.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve our calendar meeting calendar?
I make a motion to approve the calendar dates.
Second, we have a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor indicate the same eye.
Eye.
Okay. Item C is a motion for recommendation and approval of board member for the calendar committee. We don't, we don't do all this. It comes back to us.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I need a motion to that appear.
I'll make mine short. I figured Eddie, he's not here.
We got here more than...
Second.
All right. They're getting really free, it's okay. All in favor indicate the same eye.
A word on the calendar committee there. That is, the calendar laws are some of the most complex laws that we have in the state, and this process changed just a few years ago. So, Ms. Ward will be getting that up with the committee that she's got together.
It's not as bad. Just got lots of rules. I'm coming in. Motion to approve non-resident contracts, which is basically our way of getting the process started.
Yeah.
How many schools we have in there?
The same that we've had in the past.
Okay, I'll make a motion. Is it Ford, McGoffin?
Johnson.
Johnson.
Hi.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor indicate the same eye.
Eye.
Opposed, I think. We got to roll. Motion to approve the 2020, 2021 draft budget as presented. We had it on our attachment to our announcement. Joe, do you have anything else to add to that?
Hey, Joe, help me with the flow chart here. Recall for nickel goes into 320, right?
Yes.
Okay, watch this, it's going out of Fund 1, is that, what's over here?
You got, we have to match, we have to, our part.
Our part comes...
Our part is local taxes. This is the match that comes from the legislature.
So, we take out the, the match out and put in Fund 400?
Yes.
We take that out and put it in Fund 400?
Right.
And the funds, sick money goes in 310, and it goes in 400?
Right.
So, we have all this money, and we write the check out of...
Out of Fund 400, which pays our bank and New York Mailer's business.
Okay. I've looked, looked duplicated, but it should be.
Right.
Yes, there's a comment. Where are we in terms of facility plans if we wanted to bond anything? I know we don't have much.
That was one of the things that Ross and Barry were going to talk about tonight, and when they come, they'll be able to give us more. To be honest with you, we're tapped out bonding-wise.
We got facility plan of 14.6 million.
Yeah, yeah, and we just completed our facility plan last...
It's for about seven, eight years we're tapped out on.
Yeah, last ball.
Okay, we have a motion then to approve the 2020, 2021 draft budget as presented.
I make the motion.
Well, that's, that comment before I second it, since Mike's new. We're looking at hearing Joe put figures out. This is not financial accounting. This is government accounting with a state twist. So, he puts $8 million, actually what we're spending is $6 million. Because when you do it, you have to put your closing fund balance would be your closing net worth. And then, they got on behalf, and that's about a million and a half dollars. Therefore, the state pays for the employees, health insurance, et cetera, but they want us to mark it down and expense it on one side and put its income on the other side. So, you're probably talking $6 million and maybe a little under.
Right, and we never see that money. It's a wash.
And this is draft. It's just, we change it frequently. We have a motion to second.
I second.
We have a second now, okay. All in favor indicate the same eye.
Eye.
Opposed, I think. Next item on the agenda is to approve the 2019, is that tape right?
Yeah.
Okay, 2019, 2020 Comprehensive District Improvement Plan, which also included that SIP. See, I...
CDEP.
CDEP, no, I mean, no, that's a part of that.
And the high schools, they also complete a C-SIP, but it doesn't need, you know, it doesn't come with the board, but they also do that at the school levels as well.
That was a rather extensive piece of work.
It is, it is.
I think I read just about all the pages.
Yeah, it's a lot of, it's a long time ago, too.
Okay, we have a motion to approve 2019 Comprehensive District Improvement Plan.
I make the motion. I'll second.
Discussion, all in favor indicate the same eye.
Eye.
Opposed. Okay, next item on the agenda is a motion to approve Paintsville First Baptist Church Agreement, which is actually for a parking lot down there.
We've had lease.
We had it for 10 years, and this is actually 11 years, so we needed to update it. Can you give us the...
The gist of it is, they let us use their parking facilities. We agreed to maintain the property. And to be honest with you, we probably use the parking lot more than the church does. We use it every day.